It is the ninth day of April at exactly 7:00 p.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Councilman Denny is on Zoom, and we can conduct business. Let the record also show that Town Clerk, Clerk Treasurer Gray, and Billing Clerk Corson, you're now the Billing Clerk, sorry, Planning Clerk.
Assistant Clerk.
Is also in attendance. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I now have a motion to reconvene to our regular meeting? I still move to reconvene to our regular meeting. Second?
I'll second.
Movement seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing none opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Could I now have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda for 8D, authorizing the mayor to sign LCSD agreement, to have that removed, and then on 8E, a motion to authorize the mayor to actually sign a lease agreement.
No.
Not a purchase.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is any announcements or proclamations, and we do have a proclamation this evening, and Councilman Merrill will read that proclamation. This is for Arbor Day.
So, the Town of Star Valley, Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming Arbor Day proclamation, June 15, 2024. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch understands the importance of trees to the health and well-being of our town residents, and whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch understands that trees to reduce erosion, provide shade, reduce heating and cooling costs, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality, and beautify our community, and whereas planting trees brings the community together and is a source of annual spiritual renewal, and whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to celebrate Arbor Day each spring to remind ourselves of the importance of trees in our community. Now therefore, we, the Town Council, Mayor of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2024, as Arbor Day to be celebrated within our community and witness whereof we have here unto set our hands this ninth day of April, 2024.
Thank you very much. On the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Oh, public comments, sorry. We have public comments, and that is, if anyone from the audience would like to speak to the council, I'll give you three minutes and just state your name and see if we have anybody.
My name is Ron Facker. I live down on Quarter Road, and this is just a basic line. The mayor looking up Vista and Cedar Creek points down and doesn't direct the traffic. I was wondering if somebody could fix that so that when we're coming up to the stop sign, we can see the oncoming traffic going on. Right now, we can't see anything, and we're dodging the electrical boxes and things, trying to figure out if there's somebody coming down. That's my basic line, so I can read right here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to adopt the consent agenda. And I'd like to read through the items that are on the consent agenda. First of all, we have the minutes from our March 12 work session, March 12 regular meeting, and our March 21 work session, dispersments, the dispatch report, court report, and specially municipal offers report. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? I move that we adopt the consent agenda. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Does Council have any comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Hearing none opposed, motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda would be the public hearings and action items, and we have quite a few. So the first item is the plat amendment for Howe, plat 9 lots 31 and 32. Chairman Bog, thank you.
Mayors of the council. The Planted and Zoning Board received a lot combination application on January 21, 2024 for Ruth Lee and Candy Howell, 15 Vista East Drive, plat 9, lots 31 and 32. The above mentioned plots in lot 9 were surveyed by surveyor Sherbal, LTD, 46 West Third Avenue, Hapton, Wyoming 83110. Letters were sent to all the landowners of the plat and the lot numbers within 300-foot radius of plat 9, lots 31 and 32. As per our ordinances, during the 30-day public comment period, the Planted and Zoning Board received no written correspondence against the law combination request. Furthermore, during our public hearing meeting on March 13, 2024, there were no objections. The Planted and Zoning Board worked within the parameters of the town to strike out the ordinances and cannot find anything detrimental to the surrounding properties nor any ordinances within the preview of the board that permits the board denial of this application. The Planted and Zoning Board hereby recommend the Town Council approve the law combination for Ruth Lee and Candy Howell, 15 Vista East Drive, plat 9, lots 31 and 32, and have them become plat 9, lot 97.
Thank you. Town Council, could I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the plot combinations.
Second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions from the audience on this amendment? Town Council?
No.
Is here.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one.
The Planted and Zoning Board received a lot adjustment application on January 21, 2024 for Brett and Annette Johnson, 13 Evergreen Drive, plat 1, lots 12 and 13. The above mentioned lot and plat, lots in plat 1 were surveyed by surveyor Sherbal, LTD, 46 West Third Avenue, Hapton, Wyoming 83110. Letters were sent to all the landowners of the plat and lot numbers within the 300-foot radius of plat 1, lots 12 and 13, as per our ordinances. During the 30-day public comment period, the Planted and Zoning Board received no written correspondence against the law combination request. Furthermore, during our public hearing meeting on March 13, 2024, there were no objections. The Planted and Zoning Board worked within the parameters of the Town of Star Valley Ranch's ordinances and cannot find anything detrimental to the surrounding properties nor any ordinances within the preview of the board that permits the board from denying this application. The Planted and Zoning Board hereby recommends the Town Council approve the lots, law adjustment for Brett and Annette Johnson, 38 Evergreen Drive, plat 1, lots 12 and 13, to become plat 01, lot 89, and plat 1, lot 90.
Jim. All right, Town Council. Can I get a motion to approve and deny?
I move that we approve the lot adjustment for Brett and Annette Johnson.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Councilman Rock, seconded by Councilman Ellis. Any questions from the audience on this one?
So it's gonna have two lot numbers there afterwards? So there's one.
There's no law combination.
It's not a common adjustment.
It's an adjustment.
Okay.
I just moved the lot, so I have a law adjustment.
Oh, you're just doing the law adjustment.
The line between us moved.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Fair.
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing none opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda.
The Planted and Zoning Board received a law combination application on January 24, 2024 for Bobby and Diane Dickerson, 109 Redwood Road, plat 6, lot 71, and plat 7, lot 102. There's no road between there. They're distant plats. The way it was drawn up is a little confusing if you just look at the numbers. The above mentioned lots in plat 6 and 7 were surveyed by surveyor Sherbal, LTD, 46 West Third Avenue, Hapton, Wyoming 83110. Letters were sent to all the landowners of the plats and lot numbers within the 300-foot radius of plat 6, lot 7, lot 71, and plat 7, lot 102, as per our ordinances. During the 30-day public comment period, the Planted and Zoning Board received no written correspondence against the law combination request. Furthermore, during our public hearing meeting on November 8, that's gotta be in this script. On March 13, 2024, there were no objections. The Planted and Zoning Board worked within the parameters of the Town of Star Valley Ranch ordinances and cannot find anything detrimental to the surrounding properties nor any ordinances within the preview of the board that permits board denial of this application. The Planted and Zoning Board hereby recommend the Town Council approve the law combination for Bobby and Diane Dickerson, 109 Redwood Road, plat 6, lot 71, and plat 7, lot 102, become plat 7, lot 121.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I get a motion to approve and deny?
I move that the Town of Star Valley Ranch should approve the law combination for Bobby and Diane Dickerson.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep. You can now. Second?
I'll say.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
But did you study whether or not reducing plats, next by lot, is allowed by state or county regulations?
I didn't hear your question. Mr. Chicago, what's the question I didn't hear?
He wants to know if you can do that by changing the plat.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yes. Yes, it was approved.
Did the Town, County decide that? You guys did.
Right. But it'd be on the county records this way?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Did we have a move in a second?
Yes.
We did, okay. Any other questions about this? Good, good, good. No? No? All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Can't hear him now?
No.
We have a connection to him.
All right. Yep, that's it. Thank you so much, Chairman. We really appreciate it. All right. The next item on the agenda is a motion, authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement. Someone make that motion. And I think the motion is actually in here. It'll make your life easier.
Just keep on reading. Yeah, okay. As a Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, I move to approve the lease of a LaRue D-55 snow blower through Summit National Park and Western State's TAP to be included in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget and authorize Mayor Kathleen Byers to sign the necessary document.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this? For a snow blower. All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. All right. Now we're moving on to ordinances, which is another line on the agenda. First ordinance is ordinance 2024-02.
Did you want to move to, or correct?
Oh, yeah, I do. I forget to do that. Hold on. Thank you very much. Could I get a motion to move to read the ordinances by title and explanation?
Mayor, I'd like to have this ordinance read in its entirety.
Okay, well, what about the rest of the council? Council?
So I'll move to just read by title.
By title?
Yeah.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Motion's approved. Four to one. And you got Councilman Denny's? Okay. So now we'll go through the ordinances by title and explanation. So the first one is ordinance 2024-02.
Ordinance 2024-02, Title III Administration, Chapter 32, Officials and Employees. The explanation, this ordinance is an update to existing code to add language governing the council and mayor duties and authority and decree into ordinance the Town Administrator, Town Clerk, and Treasurer positions. This is the third reading of this ordinance. There was only one minor change from second reading to third reading, and that was to clarify the periods of time that a council member or the mayor can be absent from council and how that participation in council meetings is defined. There were no other changes from second to third reading. I would move that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-02, Title III Administration, Chapter 32, Officials and Employees.
Okay. Second?
I'll say.
Moved by Councilman Rock, seconded by Councilman Ellis. Is there any questions on this ordinance?
I've got a discussion.
Well, hold on, let the audience.
Can you continue, lady?
Hold on, let the audience speak, and then I'll turn it over to the council. Okay? Mister Sidaway, would you please come up? State your name.
My name's Boyd Sidaway. I live up on Vista Drive. This was brought to my attention by some citizens about three days ago, whenever the thing was published. And I'm not an attorney. I have no experience in writing ordinances, so I'd like to bring to the council, all the council's attention, a couple of things. This has to do with the paragraph that's being changed. The old paragraph read, "Being absent from the town for more than, for an extended period of time," so it makes it impossible for the town, council member to be aware or involved of the town, of business of the town. That's being changed. What it says now is we have to physically be in attendance, and if you miss more than, not even within 90 to 10, you're to be relieved of your position as a councilman. I want to make sure you've thought about some things. I hope the attorneys looked at this. Because if your attorney hasn't looked at it, you may be doing some things that you shouldn't be doing. So let me point out a couple of things just for you to consider. First off, you can't discriminate, I don't think, between councilmen and boards. We've got a ton of boards with a lot of absentee people that come in or are on our Zooms in for their meetings. We got one board member on the water board that lives in Salt Lake, and he comes in probably seven, what is it, nine or 10 times a year, Ellis? He comes in on Zooming. So that would eliminate them too, because you shouldn't have the council and the boards. Secondly, I want to make sure you understand, you have Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order says you can have a meeting and use electronic devices. If you use electronic device, I can count your presence. I can count you as part of the quorum, and I can count your vote. So you've got to change Robert's Rules of Order because they are contradicting what you're trying to do here. I think you're discriminating the council against those running for council, the councilmen running for council. Let me give you an example. I'm, and by the way, personally, that one, I don't agree with what I'm saying, but I would say it because I think it's right. If you want to be part of this council, and you're a snow blower, or you're gonna be gone, and you want to run for office, and you say, "I'm gonna be gone, but I want to vote for you because I want you to represent me," I'll vote for you. If you say that and I don't want you, then I won't vote for you. But that's us, the people are making that decision, not the council setting the rules. So therefore, I would say that if somebody declares their intent to be absent during the winter, that it would, you would be restricting my right to vote for somebody or my choice of somebody I would like to see run. So I just want you to keep that in mind. The last thing is, this is the third reading. This is an important thing. You can kind of tweak the front end when you discuss what this ordinance is about and say, "Well, it's included." But you're including it on your third reading. So I would highly recommend that you table this for 30 days. I'd recommend very strongly that you get an attorney's opinion on this. You know, this may give some bad things and maybe some legal action in the future if you don't. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience on this? Okay, Council?
Yes.
Council Denny? Council? Okay.
Yes, I missed all of the important comments, but I've heard that, you know, discussed with you before, so I'm definitely gonna vote no on this for those reasons here. Taking people disqualified and providing for, be on the board or on the council is because they plan to participate via zoning. I don't think I missed a whole lot by everybody else's, too, you know? I've been there for every workshop and every meeting, and I don't think I missed anything by not being there. So again, I'll vote no because of that.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Denny, or Councilman Rock?
I just wanted to add that the clarification is about participation and how you participate, and it does not say that you can, you don't have any opportunity to participate virtually. It says there's three times, and if it's more than three times, you need to get approval from the mayor. So I don't believe, the way it's written, that it's excluding anyone. And we added this change for the third reading because the question was asked by Councilman Denny, and this is why we added the clarification.
This phrase I added on the third reading.
All right, any other comments, Council? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'll stay.
Councilman Denny?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-03. That is land usage.
This is ordinance 2024-03, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning. The change is to update the ordinance or update the existing code, add definitions, and verify language regarding garages. This is the third reading. And if I remember correctly, there were no changes from the second reading. So I would like to move that we approve ordinance 2024-03, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 1547.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll open this up to any public comment. Any questions about this ordinance?
Pretty straightforward.
Council? Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-04. This is zoning also. This is the second reading.
Ordinance 2024-04, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning. This ordinance is to establish, the second reading to establish standards and guidelines for the building of single-family homes in Star Valley Ranch. You're going to notice as it's being scrolled through that there are extensive revisions from the first reading to the second reading. I want to thank P&amp;Z for helping with that. The major, the reason for a lot of the changes was to try and make it less vague and something more enforceable. And essentially, just to, again, add some clarity to it. I would move that we approve ordinance 2024-04, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions from the audience on this?
I have.
Okay.
Sandra Willis. On this ordinance, there's one word in here, and it's four times in the ordinance. And the word is "should," and I think that's a vague word in the wording. And it should be "shall," since everything else is "shall." And so it shows up four times on the second page. "Open space design landscaping in the front, back, and sides of the property should be used." And that's vague. It's like, you can or you may not, or... It leaves it up to whoever does the landscaping. And that purpose is to reduce the impact of larger buildings. And we have a really large building in the town right now. So on the third page, on the top, the first line, it says, "The dimensions of the porch should be compatible with the scale of the building facade." And I would think that the porch shall be compatible. And the other one, the next one, is number three, "Building and driveway lighting should not extend." Should be, I think it should be "shall" because it's more definitive. The word "should" is very vague and leaves it up to whatever they think. And so in the last page, it's number two, "Doors, windows, and balconies should be located to respect the privacy." I think that "should" be "shall." And so it's just those four words of "should," I think, to be consistent because the rest of the ordinance uses the word "shall." And it's definitive if you use the word should, I mean, shall.
Thank you, Sandra.
Not should, thanks.
All right. Any other comments on this one? Council?
This was our second reading, so that's right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yay, motion carries. Next item is appropriations, that's ordinance 2024-05. And we'll have our court treasurer, Gray, go through the ordinance for us.
So this is ordinance 2024-05, Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2024 to 2025. And it's an ordinance providing operating capital budgets for the town of Star Valley Ranch for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. I will caveat this with saying that these sort of descriptions, the, can't think of the word, my brain's gone, but it'll be changed for second reading. I don't believe it's descriptive enough of where some of this funding is coming from. So it will match the financial statements that are published monthly on the website. But, so currently, for first reading, we have revenue, general fund revenue taxes of 1.275 million, licenses and permits of 75,500, intergovernmental revenues, which covers the direct distribution, marital royalties, et cetera, of 1.157 million, interest at 64,000, and miscellaneous revenue of 22,800. And then in the expenses, we have general government of 359,000, public safety of 522,000, general fund operations of 1.16 million, attorney, this is actually Attorney Court and Hordes of 8,000, municipal court of 1.1,907, planning and zoning of 156,000, executive overhead of 35,000, travel and tourism of 4,000, natural resources of 16,000, and contribution to capital reserves of 330,000. And on the general fund capital improvement, our source of funds, we have contribution from general fund of 330,000. Application of reserves, the roads improvement reserve of 1.18 million, capital equipment of 113,000, and town facilities of 166,000. On the use of funds, hardwood bridge replacement of 540,000, middle branch bridge replacement of 540,000, and various chip seal projects of 100,000, for total out of the roads reserve of 1.18 million. And capital equipment of 113,000, this is purchase of a new used SMO vehicle and...
Building search?
Yeah. And the other, not out of the capital equipment.
Oh, sorry. Later?
Versus, off the top of my head, I don't know. Town facilities of 166,000, which is repair on buildings, including the one across the street, and the reserve for future improvements of 330,000. And on the water fund operating budget, we have on the revenue, water usage fees of 204,000, base fee for meter lots of 969,000, base fees of unmetered lots of 270,000, tax fees of 75,000, penalties of 15,000, and miscellaneous and interest revenues of 111,000. On the expenses side, we have the water administration, 139,000, water service, 23,000, water operations of 312,000, water salary and wages of 478,000, principal and interest payments of 655,000, and contribution to capital reserves of 36,000. And on the capital side, we have the upper reserve funds of 287,000, this source of funds, the Arco Water Improvement Project Grant of 1.39 million, and the system reserve contribution of 954,000, for a total of 2.64 million for water projects. Contribution for water operations of 36,000, and town facilities water portion of 4,000, and application of reserves for capital equipment, which is purchase of a new, their portion of the, something?
Many.
I have to take better notes. 28,000, for a total source of funds of 2.7 million. Use of funds is Water Improvement Project 23 of 2.64 million, capital equipment of 28,000, and water portion of the facilities of 4,000, and contribution to reserves is 36,000, for a total of 2.7 million. And I am happy to answer questions if I...
We'll do a motion here. Make sure to put it up to questions. Can I get a motion on the budget?
Hold on, pull you back up to the top. You can't hear me. I move we approve ordinance 2024-05, Water General Fund Operating Budgets Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Okay, now we'll open it up to questions, and I'm sure we'll have some from the audience. So would you like to talk here?
I got a question for you. On the expenses for this year, what is our forecast? If you look at what you've got in there for 2.6 million of expenses for next year, what is the forecast for this year?
It's all on the, so if you've looked on our website...
I haven't yet, that's why I'm just asking for...
So we publish monthly financial statements that show where we are as of this month. It's actually the previous month, so it's as of March.
Right, but is there any kind of a forecast you do to see how much you're going this
We can't forecast because of the way that our revenues are received.
Okay.
I think it's kind of had a, what was it, half a million is what we were looking at?
I believe so.
In surplus?
And surplus, versus the budget we had for last year?
Yes.
Okay, so surplus. And what is the largest item on the expense list, the 2.6 million? What is the, the single largest increase year over year? Can you, can you identify that?
So really, the only major increases that we're having this year is adding two new positions, one of which is the town administrator, and one of which is the building official. Part of the town administrator gets split between general and water. The building official will be entirely general. It gets split between administration and planning and only planning.
Okay.
But, but we're really looking at pretty flat from current year into what we're predicting for next year. The only major increases are user reserves, capital projects, and so operations side, it's really just going to be really flat.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I didn't say so. Way better.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I think there was one other thing that came up on the, on our list, was the boards, because we now have a tourism board, which is funded through the lodging tax. And so that one, they now, they now have the budget.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? Council? Have a comment?
Yes, I've got a comment about this.
Okay.
The basis for the revenue water rates has not been put in any kind of documentation. And we put together a committee last fall, it's been called the Mayor's Committee, and all we've received from that committee is a verbal indication that the rates should be raised three dollars, and the, the trouble rate raised three, 10,000, and a cent from down, or whatever, so. I would indicate that in previous years, we used to receive a very well documented basis for rate changes. This year, we have nothing that we can look at, read. So I think this, I'm going to vote no on this first meeting, because we have no basis for the water base.
Okay. Any other, you have a comment?
I do have a comment. So I just wanted to comment on how I was going to vote tonight. I, we've had an increase in employees and an increase in surplus by quite a lot, and I believe more can be done for increased services for our citizens. So at this time, I cannot consciously, it was good conscience, vote yes on this, as we are continuing to do as we have been in the past.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table, so we have to vote. Any other questions? Yep. Did somebody have a question? Okay.
Are you talking about the water rates?
No.
No.
No, we're talking about appropriations.
Water rates, so I thought I missed the next one. Okay, I think...
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? No, any opposed?
No.
No.
No, okay, we have two opposed to the budget. Okay. It's on the first reading, we still have two more readings. All right, next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-06. And Councilman Rock?
Ordinance 2024-06, Title V, Public Works, Chapter 4, 54 Water Rates, issued by the governing body of Star Valley Ranch. This ordinance updates existing code to set water rates by resolution to be set in June.
Okay. Bring a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance, yeah, pull you back up to the top. Ordinance 2024-06.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Okay, let's, we'll open this one up to communication or for discussion, so, audience? Okay. Come on.
My question, Sandra Willis. My question is the wording, water rates are set by the governing body from time to time, and the words are from time to time. It's very vague, and so it kind of doesn't tell the citizen whether it's once a year, once every six months, from time to time, could be any time. I don't think it should be more specific. If it's at every fiscal year, it should say at every fiscal year. From time to time is just really too nonspecific. It's just the wording.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Sandra. Any other comments? On this portion? Okay, Council? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. All right, we now have the mayor and council comments. And I just have one thing, Vista Drive is part of the new, the water project coming up. And so for those who drive it and walk it, we know it's a disaster, and we really can't put any more money into it, because it's going to come out. So I think May 1st was the date that we got for Public Works, that they were going to take out. And it's just from, just below Cedar Creek Drive, and up to Vista East. The rest of Vista is fine, so. And that's where the water project goes, goes up to Vista East, and then up to Green Canyon, part of the water project. So we'll, we'll get several emails out, but I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware that that's going to go back to Brown until the water project is completed. And that's it, Councilman, would you have?
I have one quick thing. The next meeting of the Travel and Tourism Board, I believe, is on May 15th. It's not on the calendar yet, so we'll confirm that. They are going to be meeting quarterly, so just wanted folks to know, that's when you can expect to see those meetings come out. And, I didn't feel like there's something else, but I don't want to worry.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. The other thing is, next month, next month's council meeting, you're going to see a resolution for the town to pursue a lodging tax on the upcoming general election ballot this fall. As the mayor mentioned earlier, the money for the Travel and Tourism Board is currently coming from lodging tax, that Lincoln County was holding for us until we got Travel and Tourism Board established. If we then add a local lodging tax, which we are allowed to do by statute, that will add a little bit more revenue for the Travel and Tourism Board to work with. The statute's very specific on what those funds can be spent on, but just wanted folks to know that you'll be seeing that on the general election ballot as well, so, thank you.
So I wanted to mention also, you reminded me, that our road board meeting for the month of May is moved from the first Tuesday to actually Thursday, the 2nd, for next month only. And then also, we have two town council positions that are coming up, and it's from May 16th to May 30th that your packet has to be turned in to our, or is it our?
Yeah.
This is a packet here, to Kristen. So if you yourselves, or if you know someone who is interested, just get them encouraged to come in and get that completed by those dates.
Thank you. Councilman Denny, did you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. That's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries.